Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, October 1st, 2007. This evening, City Council is meeting in regular session. We do have a forum, barely, with five of seven members present.
And the clerk.
Member Bain is in the House and should be here presently. And our clerk of council is not here with us, but should be here at about any moment. Next item on our agenda is disposition amendments. Do I have a motion to accept the regular session meeting minutes for September 4th and September 17th, 2007?
I will move such, but I would like to see the clerk here first.
Got a motion and a second?
Can we hold off for two minutes?
Sure, we can hold off. Well, there's Member Bain. Still waiting on the clerk.
It won't open? Okay. Rod had it open, so why don't we?
Okay.
We gave her a task and obviously...
Yeah, the task.
They have done more damage than we thought.
Well, we can recess for a few moments.
I would say so.
Okay. Let's take about a three-minute recess. One member of council is present. Clerk Law Director is on board. We've had a motion and a second for the disposition of meeting minutes to approve. Paul and Jim, for September 4th and September 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Communications, Walter Wild.
I would move we accept the financial reports for August, May, and June of this year. We're catching up from the summer.
August, June, and July.
August, June, July, sorry. Okay.
Or June, July, August. In some orders, okay. Motion, do we have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The auditor's reports have been accepted. Communications, Law Director.
No report, Mr. President, for open session. I have a number of items for executive session.
Well, that's...I jumped the gun myself there. Are there any other items under communication? The one thing that I would offer to other members of council is the public records request law. It's our policy, I should say, that I have signed and reviewed. Can we have a copy put in all members of council, so that they are aware of what it is? Okay. Okay. Is there any other communications? Member Wild.
I've had a couple citizens come up to me with their concern about bicyclists. A lot of them are riding on the sidewalks, wrong way, through stop signs, through traffic lights. I saw two today, just almost getting, you know, run flat. I would like to emphasize...and again, this is somebody coming to me and saying, "What can you do about it?" And of course, we only have so many police. But I think if anybody wants...bicyclists want respect of the road, they have to respect the laws of the road as well. And I just bring that up because it is an issue. And I know you're going to have another safety meeting sooner or later, but...
Several, but yeah.
Several, I know. But at the same time, it is...it's been brought up to me by several people.
Did you wish to speak?
I do know that we have a booklet from the Ohio Department of Transportation that clearly defines the rules of riding. If anybody wants to pick those up, we have them available in council chambers. I'll put them downstairs also, in the city building.
Back on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Abel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things I'd like to touch on tonight. One is, even though it was a very hot summer and we established attendance records and revenue records at the Athens City Pool, we also had our first year of the increase in the minimum wage to $6.85 per hour. And you have to have some distinction between the cashier and the lifeguards and swim instructors versus swim aids, et cetera. So it actually comes out that we lost, even though we set all those records. It wasn't a significant big amount. And we're still working toward getting the final, but there's expenses that we have collected so far without the final chemical bills for the pool being received. We are at a loss point. It's the related item to that is how we're, you know, coming in the community center itself, because we do have a need of a minimum staff there of three people. You have to have somebody in the fitness room. You have to have somebody on the front desk to be a cashier. And you need someone going through all the building, the rest of the building, to make sure that all of that is safe. And even in the evenings when you're doing that with three part-time workers, it does...I mean, it can cost you a minimal amount to, you know, to keep the facility open. Another thing I'd like to report is in the police department, we received today a resignation of one of our police officers. He's taken his job with the State Fire Marshal's Office. So he will be leaving in two weeks. Looking at our staffing level that we had January 1st, we are now three down from that and have not been able to hire anybody yet. We have three people, I think, within the pool that's going through and will be starting interviews, but still to get a officer up on the street by themselves, you're talking probably 15 months. And so the department is short-staffed. They're doing a tremendous amount of overtime. But I want council to be aware of the staffing problem within the police department. And this is not...everybody statewide is having this problem because of...I mean, hopefully, Lieutenant Fish will return from active duty in November, which will help us a little bit, but...and then we have another one on active duty. So really, of the staffing levels you've approved that we had was five different than what it is, plus we were recruiting to try to get two additional officers in addition to those three. So it's seriously down...it's down, what, to 22 now? 22 officers?
Member Bain.
Oh, apropos of that, I was wondering, somebody asked me why we were responding to University Courtyard. Is there any way we can hand that over to OU?
It's in the city.
Yeah. But they didn't pay their bills, so I just wondered. And it was just...I thought, well, that's just a citizen said to me, "Why don't you just have...University do University Courtyard." I guess it's not possible. I mean, because we do tie up an officer to go up there and check out the issue, so...okay. Thank you.
That's the other comment. Yes, Member Sands.
I had a question. The mayor mentioned 15 months lag time before an officer is on the street. 15 months from the time they begin the...from this point?
Well, we're at the point now that the candidates have gone through the original civil service testing. They've gone through the physical abilities test and have passed both of those. And that they've gone through a full background check. Background checks are one of them that takes a particular amount of time, because you want that physician checked out very much. So now we're at the interview stage. Followed that, if we select from the three candidates, and we could select all three because we like them, there are spots open, then you would have to go through a physical examination to make sure that there's nothing medically problematic. And then you'd have to go through a psychological evaluation and get those reports back. So those things will take into next year. Just the last steps. And then depending upon the officer and their background, will depend upon how long they have to be assigned to another officer as a training...in training. And you have six months, I think, for...what's the probationary period?
A year.
A year, yeah. So to get them off probation is one year. So that's why I'm saying at minimum, from today, as to when we get through that resignation, we're probably 15 months away from being at additional officers over there. That they can do overtime and respond to calls on their own and everything else. Now, it may be a little more earlier, depending upon the quality of that officer and their past experience.
Other comments for the mayor? Member Bishop.
This is really kind of a question that might go to the bicycling. The meter...people.
Parking enforcement.
Thank you. Parking enforcement. Is that the only thing they can do, or could they be deputized to maybe do citations on bicycling or speeding or other things as they're walking around the streets?
Well, their training is not as a police officer. Same thing, communications officers are not trained in the Ohio Police Training Academy or its equivalency. And that's really to get the arrest powers of a lot of things, you'd need that. But you could direct some of that toward the Law Director's office to see if there are any other...we do have them doing other things, like parking on the sidewalk and in the front yard, and they have the ability to do...do they have voter citation?
Yes.
I believe...so there are some things that they can do. But if you're going to charge somebody in the areas of the either state or city's traffic codes, then I'd have to refer that to the Law Director for who's trained to be actually to make issue citations for that or not.
Other comments? Member Wild.
When we put advertisement, I assume we're doing nationwide or statewide or for police? How do we do that?
It's multi-statewide. I mean, we've got, of course, nationwide only from the standpoint of our website. But we advertise in Parkersburg and Columbus and in a fairly broad area. But it's this lack of police officers is, if you talk to other cities, is a problem just about everywhere across the state. Because so many of those are also people that are in National Guard, and there's frequent call-ups, et cetera, and that...and military police aren't coming out of the military as much anymore, which was one of the prime sources that you would, you know, look for.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I just...
Sure.
Actually, Law Director Hunter, could you look into that and just see if there's a possibility that the traffic enforcement people could maybe at least look at, you know, if they're walking down the street and somebody's biking on the sidewalk?
Well, they do talk to them. I've seen them do it. I mean, they...
I can do that. Of course, there's more issues than that that council must consider. Those are unionized employees. And you add duties to unionized employees, there's usually salary increases with it and so forth.
Ordinances for third reading. O-10207, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance O-10207.
Second.
This ordinance and the one that follows, at least in Section 1, are very related. So Section 1 amends from the unappropriated...appropriates from the unappropriated balance in the general fund $519,034.40 to the sewer fund debt service. This is to pay a note and the interest on that note that we took out at Hocking Valley Bank a year ago to get the Columbus Road Sewer Project initiated. The second part of that is appropriating $4,000 to the tourism fund, and that's to purchase bike racks for several of our buses to allow them to pick up bike riders and their bicycles.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10207?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10307, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to renew the note authorized by ordinance O-9606 to meet city obligations in the sewer fund and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 10307.
Second.
As I said, this is related to the ordinance we just passed. We need to appropriate the funds to pay this amount, $519,000, et cetera. But what we are asking in this ordinance is to authorize the auditor to renew the $500,000 note, pay the interest, because at this time, the sewer fund does not have the funds to pay the $500,000 plus interest. In the time between tonight and the actual payment date, we may receive some funds which will allow us to pay down something on that note. Notice that the language says authorize in an amount not to exceed $500,000. So it's possible that some of this principal might be paid down, but at this time, we're not sure about it.
Further discussion? Member Wild.
So the difference between 102 and 103 is about $19,000. Is that the interest part?
That's the interest on this note.
I figured, just wondered.
Which the mayor, what did you figure, about 3.85 percent? Pretty good percentage, maybe? Please, Paul, council.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10307?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10607, an ordinance authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Program. Member Patterson.
Oh, sorry. I was having a different...something we suspended before. Mr. President, I move for adoption of 10607. This is an ordinance to proceed to apply for capital funds for buses. It is connected with the grant that we received a year ago for a county plan, and that county plan will make us eligible to receive these particular funds in terms of involving the elderly and handicapped, mental retardation development disabilities part of the capital funds.
Further discussion? Member Wild.
This is to do the design, but not actually a functioning transportation. Eventually, we should put a plan in place, and the county's passing it to us because we're working on...your task force is working on it right now.
That's correct, but some of our city funding also comes from these particular programs, so it affects both.
Okay.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10607?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10707, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the City of Athens and Columbus Division of Police. Member Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I think I'm supposed to table it, right? No?
Move to substitute.
Substitute?
New amendment. New contract.
Amended by substitution.
Well, I'm on top of things tonight.
So I take it that was a motion to sub...
Oh.
To amend to...
To amend by substitution, if all is...
You are absolutely...
And I'll second it. I'll second it.
And the amendment would be substituted ordinance.
The substituted ordinance is...has materials in it that will make an emergency clause so that we can work on Halloween. And beyond that, I was wondering if the Law Director has been working on this, maybe you could tell us what you did.
Take it, Gary.
Thank you. I...the contract went up to the Columbus Police Department. They made some changes for their purposes up there, and it's mostly clerical and administrative changes. They may really just change the substance of the contract, but enough of the changes that I felt we should substitute a different contract for. The emergency is so that the officers would be available for Halloween if they choose to use them.
But there is no fiscal...I mean, I was of the impression that we were just going to pass it, they would come back, we would redo it. So now we're doing it all in one fell swoop, which isn't a bad idea. Are there any financial differences between...
No, it still says there's no financial contribution.
Okay. So we have...will I have read it for the first time?
Yes.
Yeah, I would have asked that you read it tonight first time and then adopt it. Suspend rules and adopt it second. That wouldn't be in place until Halloween.
Halloween. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for doing that. We had no hope that we would have it by Halloween, so thank you.
This will give all members of council an opportunity to review it.
Yes.
I'm sure we'll have a copy in their boxes. Okay. Thank you. So it has been amended by substitution and read for the first time. Ordinances for second reading. I'm sorry. You're right. I'm moving on. I'll get us out of here. We have a motion, second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, ordinance 107 has been amended by substitution and read for the first time. Now on to ordinances for second reading. O-8907, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 41 site plan Ordinance 11207, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to move that we consider ordinance 11207 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This suspension is due to part of Section 1, appropriating some funds to the refund lines in some of the departments within the city. Some departments have citizens waiting anxiously for refunds.
Okay. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of considering ordinance 11207 under suspension of council rules?
Aye.
Those opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 11207. This ordinance, again, has actually three sections. The first section authorizes amending the appropriation from the unappropriated balance $2,000 to the recreation fund to repair some slides at the East State Street Park and the South Side Park. Also, $19,000 to the community center fund for...to take advantage of a State Department of Health grant that we've received to replace electrical machines in the community center, most of which are over seven years old, dating from the time the community center was opened. And finally, the part that we're asking to suspend for, $300 to the general fund and $1,000 to the garbage fund. Both of these are to allow these funds to pay refunds to citizens who, for whatever reasons, have overpaid their account. And again, our...this is...equate this as a bill that we owe at this point. We need to pay it.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11207?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11307, an ordinance authorizing preliminary and design engineering for the Richland Avenue corridor.
I was wondering, we have talked about doing some amendments on this, and I would like to ask Amy if she would please put it on her agenda next time, just to...so we can have some time to look at it again.
Okay. Member Bishop.
I was going to say that because I'd originally mentioned that a citizen had talked to me about possibly increasing the scope, you know, sensitive point. So the South Side Association net, and I believe they talked about it in some detail, especially with Andy, and that they feel, I just want to say, from the Richland Avenue and the South Side, people are comfortable with the scope of the study as it presently is.
They don't want it expanded.
Not at this point, because I think they feel that in the future, that is something that may be looked at. It doesn't have to be looked at now.
Other comments? Ordinance 11407, an ordinance authorizing replacement of the debris tank on the back con truck and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 11407.
Second.
This is a piece of equipment that is used in sewer emergencies, and we have an emergency clause on it. It's going to still take a month to get it taken care of, and so that's the reason for the suspension.
Further discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 114?
Aye.
Those opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Move adoption of 11407.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 114?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11507, an ordinance granting a revocable law you send to Jack Alvis owner Alvis Auto Repair 188 Columbus Road to allow a portion of a new parking area to encroach into the city right of way. Ordinance 11607, an ordinance amending ordinance 12906 establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 11707, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of an approximately 29.94 acre tract on Dora Lane. Member Bain.
In Debbie's absence, I'm going to try and discuss this. O-11807 puts into law the recommendations of the planning commission from September 20th of this month, and on the 5th of November, we will be having a public hearing to designate zones in the annexation...on these designated zones in the annexation area. As you see on the map on the back of the ordinance, it's in your packet, the area of 24 acres has been split in two, with the open space zones showing up in one area and...or in two areas, but not separate, all in one. Sort of a...almost looks like a long involved ribbon thing and some other dangles, but there it is. And then the R1 zone, 5.321 acres. And so that represents at least the five acre split represents what the Mr. Funk asked for. And that's what we're...we will have the final public hearing and final reading on the 5th of November on this particular one.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 118? Ordinance 11907, an ordinance accepting the petitions for annexation of a 45.612 acres filed by Athens O8 LLC Holzer Clinic located along East State Street.
Mr. President, once again, in Debbie's absence, I'd like to talk a bit about 11907. And you can see the WHEREASs. We have the commissioners releasing this 45.612 acres. And we have gone through the 60 days that are required by law. The city has agreed to extend water, sewer, fire, and police services upon completion of the annexation process. We did that by ordinance perhaps a year ago, maybe more, maybe less. And we have also the agreement in the WHEREAS statement. These are all just informative if there's some future problem. And as is typical, you can see, upon completion of said sanitary sewer and water lines, the city agrees to take ownership of the infrastructure. And so the petition is there, the 41...45.612 acres. And we have Section 2 where we have the clerk making copies and going to the county recorder, the county auditor, and the state of Ohio. So this is the annexation needed for Holzer.
Law Director Hunter.
I don't think we need to suspend tonight. We have to do...that's where we have to have a public hearing on that one.
It's all the 5th of November, right?
I might indicate, just for the public's information, this one's a little bit different in the WHEREAS, it contains some information, because we decided not to do the development agreement, basically because most of the items contain development agreement, were done in advance of the annexation petition reaching here. So it really memorializes those items that were in the development agreement are now memorialized just in the WHEREAS.
Member Wild, did you have a comment?
No, not really.
Okay. And it does look like it'll stay manufacturing.
Which is the next thing on the agenda?
Okay. Okay. Then ordinance 12007, an ordinance designated in the zones for the annexation area proposed for the Holzer Clinic along East State Street. Member Bain?
Aye.
Both?
Okay, are we on 119 or 120?
120.
Okay. All right. Which one did I miss, Paul?
You started with 117, which is the annexation, I think, and then you went to...
119.
Yeah, 119.
We missed 118.
Yeah. Well, you started discussing the map. As the map.
As the map.
Okay. But we didn't say a reading.
We didn't talk about the annexation area, so did we...were we okay then?
Did I not read something?
Who knows? Replay the tapes, let's find out. Okay, 120.
We can take care of that.
All right, so we have the annexation area taken care of, and now we're on to the...
Designation.
Designation of the zones for the annexation area. Once again, in Debbie's absence, Debbie attended the planning commission... Once again, in Debbie's absence, Debbie attended the planning commission meeting on the September 20th, and she and Debbie Walker have scheduled a public hearing on these annexation zones. The planning commission recommended something a bit different from what the Holzer people had asked for, and I believe Debbie asked in the intervening period, as she was going out of town, did they mind, and they don't mind, so the zone will be, I would have, if I were not introducing it, I would ask if the utilities would match that zone, because I think they're at the end, but I won't ask it since I'm not, since I'm not, since I'm introducing it instead. But notice that we have the land divided up, we've seen this map before, when lawyer Meek was here, you can see the corporation limits, the open space designation along the river, the M-zone, and then the B3 next to it, I guess, but we're mainly talking about, we are definitely talking about the M-zone, the B3 is the one that is next to it. The only issue with M is that in our current zoning code, which may or may not be changed, it is not a residential zone, it doesn't seem to be a problem in this case, and it wasn't a problem for the people who, who asked for the B3, so I say, okay.
Other comments?
Just-
Member Sands.
Just a comment, I, since, since Holzer itself has been, has been asked about this, and the M is okay with them, that we'll let it go, as the government of Bain says, but this whole strip of land along the south side of East State Street, we have talked about, and the planning commission has recommended that that M-zone be changed to a B3, so I think council has been doing that piecemeal when we had the opportunity, hoping that sometime in the near future would be done for all of that, but again, this is a proposal, the petitioner has accepted it, so I guess I'll support this at this time.
Feel the same way.
Ordinance 12107, an ordinance accepting the donation of the 1981 Porsche 911 SC for use as the DARE vehicle in the police department, and expressing the appreciation of the City of Athens, Ohio, member Sands.
Mr. President, the, the title of this ordinance really tells most everything, this, this vehicle is being donated to the city DARE program by David Malawista, who is or is a recently retired police officer, I'm not sure.
He's an auxiliary officer.
He's an auxiliary at this point. He supports the DARE program strongly and feels that this vehicle used by the DARE officer as he visits local schools will be a great addition to the program. We have a valuation placed upon this by a local car dealer valued at $25,000, and I think that's about it.
Other comments? Member Wile.
Who ends up paying for the painting of it? I assume that it's going to look like the Talon DARE vehicle eventually, who does the detailing, I guess? Do we do it, I guess?
City would do that.
City, okay.
Any insurance?
This one did.
Member Bishop.
I just want to say, that's very nice of him, and so I'm glad that this shows our appreciation, it's going to be some fancy DARE officer, I hope so.
Let's hope we don't catch him speeding, then.
Okay, on to ordinance 12207, an ordinance amending, ordinance 13505 to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code and declaring an emergency, member Bain.
Mr. President, last committee meeting, we discussed an increase 6 percent, it's what you see on both the base rate, which pays the, basically, the, is a charge assessed against all users, it comes in three flavors, residential, commercial, industrial, each has an increase, and then in addition to that, the base rate is from 0 to 15,000 gallons, $10.92, up from $10.30, and 16 to 50, you can see the costs go up and so, that's the rate based on usage, which is measured via the water bill. And the second section, as we discussed, we're going to recede all sewer tap fees in subsequent years into the sewer death line, seven.
Other comments? What are made on our agenda is announced, it's another business. Maybe meetings the next time? Member Flowers.
Transportation committee meeting, it is my.
One else? The usual committee meetings?
Debbie, Debbie will-
The usual rotations?
Definitely.
Okay. Member Sands?
Finance added.
Any others? Okay. Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda, is there anyone here wishing to speak before council? Seeing none, and tonight we have item number 10 on our agenda, which is an executive session. Council will be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations, ending and threatening litigation, and real estate, so-
We go into executive session with the law director, mayor, the auditor, service safety director if needed.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, Wile?
Aye.
Bishop?
Aye.
Bain?
Aye.
Sands?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
We will take about 10 minutes, it's now 8:06 on the clock, at about 8:16, 8:20 is the latest, I ask that everyone have their questions done so that we can shut down the cameras.
Three and a half percent.
And after that, we only have-
I just-
Thank you.
This other one.